Our next speaker is Mr. Sean Duffy.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the City Council. My name is Sean Duffy and I'm resident of the First Board and a member of the Chicago Democratic Socialist of America. More than 25 million Americans have filed for unemployment over the last month, and a third of Americans weren't able to pay their rent at all. This crisis is devastating our city's working class, and we have a right to recovery. In the immediate, the city must enact an indefinite moratorium on addictions, halt all court hearings and filings for eviction and foreclosure, and waive the collection of all rent, mortgage, and utility payments for the duration of the COVID crisis. The city must also acquire emergency housing units for homeless individuals so they can be safely sheltered during this crisis. Additionally, the Chicago Police Department must cease this escalated harassment of city residents, particularly on the South and West Side, and instead suspend arrest and work for the county state court's immediate mass incarceration. The alternative is continued spread of the virus within jails, prisons, and detention centers, which will result in masks up unless we do something. Finally, Madam President, I must speak to the emergency powers ordinance that was deferred and published on Wednesday and is now being considered this afternoon. You accused the aldermen who supported the D U P motion of grandstanding and told the press they were "choosing to serve themselves instead of the residents who elected them." I will remind you that these aldermen were elected by the voters of the awards to represent them because of the issues they raised and because of the policies they fight for, because of their politics. But instead of debating issues or policy, you make petty personal attacks without any substance. Your total dismissal and continued disrespect towards the aldermen extends to the constituents and to the movements that they so tirelessly raise up. I must ask you this: Why should anyone trust you or your administration with the special powers they have on these ordinance? In the midst of this crisis, your administration permitted Hillco to blow up a coal plant smokestack at Little Village that left entire city blocks covered in toxic dust. Which is reporting by ProPublica shows that you seem to have little interest in addressing even basic questions or concerns aldermen are raising about the city's response to the crisis. Another report by the Daily Line shows that while you claim that you were not briefed on the rent abatement ordinance being introduced today by Alderman Martin, that there is an email record showing that a draft of proposal was sent by the alderman to your policy team weeks ago. Is your administration disorganized and mismanaged, Madam President? Or were you just lying? As others have noted, the City Council cannot give you rather easily over zoom. And the fact that the council should meet twice a month as directed by the municipal code. This emergency power ordinance would give the mayor unchecked control and erode the role of the council as a democratic body. I urge council members to vote no, and I urge the city to take bold action now to protect the working class of the city from total devastation that has resulted this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Our next speaker is Dr. Denise French.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I realize you have many serious problems to deal with, but I'd like to speak out on behalf of the carriage horses and their owners. I am Dr. Dennis French, a diplomat of the American Board of Veterinary Practitioners, certified in equine practice with over 42 years of professional experience with these horses. I'm also a professor at the University of Illinois College of Veterinary Medicine, a member of the Illinois State Veterinary Medical Association, a Champaign County Farm Bureau member, and vice president of the Horsemen's Council of Illinois. As a representative of these groups, we strongly oppose the proposed ordinance to ban the use of carriage horse services and restrict the licensing of the carriage companies within the city of Chicago. As an educator and veterinarian, the welfare of horses is a critical component of everything that I do and believe in. I assure you that the care and well-being of Chicago's carriage horses is foremost in the minds of their owners, the equine veterinarians that care for them at regular intervals, and the farriers that provide all-important foot care. I would also share that representatives of the Horsemen's Council have repeatedly inspected these horses, the harnesses that are used on them, and the stables where they are kept, and we have found no causes for concern. These horses are well cared for, healthy, and they like to work. From a scientific point of view, studies of carriage horses have documented that measurement of their stress hormones when working are actually lower than horses that are grazing on pasture. And they in fact remain lower when they return to their overnight stable. Claims of mistreatment due to work or insufficient care are simply unjustified. In another study that was just published in May of 2020, in reaction to claims of mistreatment, that those authors found that the duration and intensity of the workload did not change the welfare of these horses. Carriage horses are ambassadors for the city of Chicago. It's important and appropriate that city leaders be concerned about the health and welfare of the horses on your streets. As a veterinarian and horse owner who has dedicated my life to the health and welfare of all animals, including horses, I ask you that you vote against this ordinance. Please allow us to work with you on appropriate regulations and location of the carriage horse operations utilizing scientific data and facts to allay any concerns for ethical and humane treatment of these carriage horses. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. French. The next speaker is Mr. Brian Bennett.
Hello, I am Brian Bennett. I'm speaking today for the hundreds of thousands of unemployed renters of Chicago, and I'm speaking directly to Mayor Lightfoot and my alderman, Harry Osterman, who is Chair of the Housing and Real Estate Committee on the immediate need for rent and mortgage cancellation in Chicago. We are desperate. April 1st came and went with almost no action, just words. Now May 1st is here, almost no action, just words. You are leaving the hard-working people who rent in this city behind. Tell the governor publicly to lift the ban on rent control so you can cancel rent and mortgage payments for the rest of this crisis, plus three months. That would take care of renters, homeowners, and small landlords. Enough memes, enough funny videos, and most importantly, enough funnier campaigns with donations from so-called housing providers. Mayor Lightfoot, I see you talking to experts and Ivy League economic advisors. Have you talked to any tenant unions? Have you talked to lift the ban, the rent control coalition? After $1.3 billion in tax breaks for Lincoln Yards, $20 million for Hillco, and not a single major ordinance for renters in your first year in office, I am scared for me and my girlfriend and my neighbors, but I am willing to do whatever it takes to keep us housed. What are you willing to do? I will conclude by saying to Alderman Osterman and the rest of City Council, the worst part is, I think I know why we're not moving urgently to help renters. How can we trust that you're fighting for us when we look at your publicly listed campaign donors and almost half of them are landlords and developers? In just the last year, your donors include Devon Realty, Silver Property Group, Edgewater Properties, Alebu Properties, McMaster Properties, Hunter Properties. I don't have time to list them all, but the point is, I'm worried that they are getting their money's worth right now. Please, clean up your donor sheets, City Council. Promise that you will cancel rent and mortgage payments if the ban is lifted, and publicly tell the governor to lift the ban on rent control today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. The next speaker is Mr. Zekiel Morris.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lightfoot and Alderman of the city of Chicago. My name is Zeke Morris. I am the managing broker of Exit Strategy Realty EMA Management. My office is located at 7300 South Tides Grove in the Sixth Ward. I'm a past president of the Chicago Association of Realtors, and currently I serve as a treasurer for Illinois Realtors, and I would like to address Alderman, Matt Martin's ordinance, except for introduction at this meeting. I'm against the ordinance, and I ask you, the City Council, to stand against it as well. I have served the community as a real estate broker and property manager for over 30 years. And although we've not always agreed, we have had, we have worked together with the city to achieve what was best for its citizens. The ordinance does not promote a sphere of cooperation, and it is harmful to the industry for all. Some of the unintended consequences include the following issues: One, the ordinance does not provide protections for the landlord. Two, tenants who move out with balances will have to be pursued via small claims court, which provides an additional burden on our landlords. A third thing is, the ordinance fails to provide a way to confirm that even although COVID, we know that we're in the midst of this pandemic, but there is no, there is no way for us to actually verify the actual emergency. The ordinance commits the landlords, but offers no property tax or mortgage relief. It disincentivizes the tenants from seeking private property arrangement. And one thing that I, in order to speak to this, I also wanted to say that there is, you know, we are in support of moving the entry of dwelling during the stay-at-home order, you know, we can support that based upon health concerns. As stated by other housing providers, the most important issue today is that we continue working together with our residents. One of the things that I want to point out to you is that the way this is put together, the ordinance gives the impression that most of your owners are institution, when in fact, there are people just like you and me who care about the health and safety of the city we serve. And I urge you to reconsider. Thank you for this opportunity, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. The next speaker is Mr. Michael Robin.
My name is Michael Robin. I am a member of the autonomous tenant team in Chicago. We work to inform people of their rights and help people facing eviction and other issues with their landlords. We've mostly been based out of the Albany Park area. But since this crisis began, we've been stretching extremely thin, dealing with an avalanche of calls from all over the city. People are being pressured and harassed into leaving their homes, both legally and illegally, and sometimes with no idea about where they could possibly go. Landlords that are saying that there's no need for this are either lying or completely out of touch with the struggles that their tenants are dealing with, forgetting people constantly being told to leave just because the landlord decided to sell their place or because of some made-up idea about how they violated the lease or because they were a couple days late on rent. It's happening all over the place. The landlord is asking you to trust landlords to do the best thing. Are either lying or just out of touch, because we cannot trust them. We've heard hundreds and hundreds of stories. In fact, we have a petition asking for our executive leaders to cancel rent and mortgages and offer tenant protections. Seventeen thousand people have signed that to date. We've taken some comments from those, there are thousands of comments, people that aren't political, just begging, begging for relief. And I don't feel that the mayor or other executive leaders have listened. You can read those comments at bit.ly/tenantstories. They're all on the Twitter page. And what I would say is that if landlords are complaining about these pro-tenant ordinances because they don't qualify for mortgage relief or, you know, they're struggling themselves, why not instead of trying to crash the mildest proposals possible, they could join us in demanding both rent and mortgage relief? And I'll tell you, it's because they're worried about profit, not surviving like the rest of us. So, there is one protection in place that actually offers much more than what the city and the state is actually offering, that the CARES Act, which is a federal moratorium on eviction and late fees. Currently, a fraction of our residents are covered by this, but they don't even know about it. So, if you want to find out if you're covered by this act so your landlord can't file an eviction or charge late fees, go to bit.ly/carestest. The city needs to do more to promote this information and make it available and enforce these laws. The mayor recently was reported as saying she didn't think that providing updates on proposed plans to help people out of work was a "good use of her time." She gave a lottery of 2,000 people getting $1,000 each. Eighty-three thousand tenants applied. She has a work, a task force where I see no mention of housing or rent relief. Her actions and her comments on the deepening crisis suggests that she's out of touch, and the centralizing power to her right now is...
Thank you, Mr. Robin. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. Andrew Lowell.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me time to speak today before you. My name is Andrew Lowell, and my family owns a small restaurant, almost around Cafe in Lakeview, Ward 44. On March 21st of this year, we are looking forward to celebrating our second anniversary of being open. We came from humble beginnings and are proud of what we've accomplished. As you know, March 21st turned out to be one of the last days which restaurants in the city were allowed to reopen to the public. Our plans for celebrations, which included our staff and our customers, were put on hold on what would have otherwise been a special day for us. However, we are not alone. This is a dark time for restaurants in the city. Our industry was among the first to be majorly impacted and forced to close. Additionally, we will likely be among the last to resume operations to the public. We are not alone. Businesses, big and small, are suffering. Concert venues, brick-and-mortar retailers, small family-owned restaurants like mine, all types of businesses here in Chicago are under an enormous burden to continue paying rent when we have no income whatsoever coming in. We are not alone. For small family-owned businesses like my own, this hits us twice, since we are not only paying for our commercial lease, but also for our residential leases. We are not alone. Our staff and our workers around the city are suffering. Restaurant workers across the city have been hit incredibly hard. In a sense, we will likely be the first and the last out. When we reopen to the public, it will take a long time before we get to the point where we were before, all of this. And if we do reach that point, we will consider ourselves lucky. You've paused evictions being heard in court until April 15th and asked that landlords be compassionate during this time and give tenants some grace. Now that April 15th is behind us, unfortunately, many landlords are not so compassionate, and many are not giving any sort of grace. Many businesses like mine have seen our revenue drop to near zero percentages from what it was. We have no money coming in, and we are expected to continue paying for our space, which you have barred us from using. We've been forced to close in the interest of the greater public health. We've done the right thing. We've been responsible and closed for the greater good. It is time for the city to do the responsible thing, not only for restaurant workers, but for all residents and workers in the city. Please quit pressure on state government to lift the Rent Control Preemption Act of 1997 and act a mortgage and rent cancellation until this is all over. And people actually have the means to pay their rent. Please put your voices behind the blueprint for recovery, which the National Restaurant Association has pushed for. This uncertainty of what the future even looks like for us is overwhelming, and I appreciate any and all effort you're putting forth to help us during this time. Please stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. That time for public comments has expired.
This concludes public comment. The Chair recognizes Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move to consider one item of unfinished business that I noticed up pursuant to Rule 41, an ordinance authorizing various emergency actions undertaken in response to the COVID-19 epidemic pandemic, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of April 22nd, 2020 as a direct introduction. If no one wishes to speak on this item, Madam President, I move passage by a roll call vote.
Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Madam Chairman, Madam President.
Can you, folks, just one second. Thank you. I would just ask if you're wishing to speak, since we all can't see the screen at the same time. Please identify yourself, and then I will call Lemon Lopez.
Madam President, a point of order. Alderman Urban, I'm sorry.
Alderman Lopez, I believe, has the floor. Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. It was going to be for a point of order that the regular order of business is for the Finance Committee to proceed, not the Budget Committee. And allowing this would be in violation of our orders without moving for suspension of the rules to go outside of the regular order of business.
Nicely done, Lopez.
Actually, Alderman Lopez, pursuant to Rule 3, all questions relating to the proprietary business should be decided by the Chair without debate and to appeal.
Then I appeal the decision of the Chair to the body.
Hold on one second. Further, I haven't even ruled yet, Alderman Lopez.
I'm just letting you know.
The presiding chair, the presiding officer shall decide all questions of order subject to appeal. So, I'm ruling that Alderman Dow's motion is in order and denying your motion.
Then I appeal the decision of the Chair to the body, Madam President.
The question before the body is, shall the ruling of the Chair, which finds that Alderman Dow's motion is in order, shall that ruling be overturned? Should the ruling be sustained? A yes vote is that the ruling of the Chair to allow for Alderman Dow's motion to go forward. And here, the item now is appropriate. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Alderman Lisparra.
Yes.
Alderman Hopkins.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman King. Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Harrison.
Down.
Alderman Sawyer.
No.
Alderman Mitchell.
Yes.
Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Zaloski Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Thompson.
Yes.
Alderman Cardenas.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Alderman Cardenas.
Yes.
Alderman Quinn.
Yes.
Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Moore.
Yes.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis.
Folks, please remember, unmute your phones, we're doing a vote.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Brookins.
Hi.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Tabarez.
Yes.
Alderman Scott.
Yes.
Alderman Sichu Lopez.
No.
Alderman Walden Arrow.
No.
What the hell?
Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Alderman Urban. Alderman Urban. Alderman Telefiero.
Yes.
Alderman Ramoyas.
Yes.
Alderman Cardona.
Yes.
Alderman Wagisback.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Austin.
Yes.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Viegas.
Yes.
Alderman Mitz.
Yes.
Alderman Spazado.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vazquez.
No.
Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Riley.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Tony.
Yes.
Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman Kapelman.
Yes.
Alderman Martin.
Yes.
Alderman Osterman.
Yes.
Alderman Haddon.
Yes.
Alderman Silverstein.
Yes.
Alderman Curtis.
Alderman Curtis, yes.
Alderman Urban.
Alderman Urban, no.
Your Honor, there are 36 yeas, 14 nays.
All right. The ruling of the Chair is sustained. Chairman Dow.
Yes, if there's no other comments, then I would call for...
Madam President.
Can you please identify...
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Alderman Rose.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to speak on this item, and I'm sure other colleagues would like to speak on this item as well.
The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Since that's Wednesday, I took action with four of my colleagues to ensure that millions in federal emergency dollars reach Chicago's hardest-hit communities on the West and South Sides. I joined with Alderman Lopez, Taylor, Sichu, and Rosana Rodriguez to defer this ordinance to ensure it could be improved to include true oversight and an equity lens. I would have felt comfortable voting for this ordinance today if it had included those reasonable oversight and equity provisions. Unfortunately, despite our efforts, ordinance before us today lacks guarantees that emergency dollars will be appropriated through an equity lens. Absent those guarantees, I must vote no on this ordinance and urge my colleagues to do so as well. Why? Because while Black Chicagoans are 30% of our city's population, they make up 60% of our city's COVID-19 deaths. Why? Because Latino-majority zip codes in Chicago are currently seeing the fastest rate of COVID-19 community spread. That is why we are fighting to ensure that this ordinance, governing the appropriation of hundreds of millions in federal emergency dollars, puts the most impacted and vulnerable Chicagoans first. In response to our attempts to amend this ordinance to include an equity lens, we have been told to trust this mayor. I must remind my colleagues that in this nation, policymakers put their trust in laws, not people. At the federal level, we have seen the disastrous effects of policies that put their trust in one sole executive. Well-intentioned policies that empowered the presidency of Barack Obama are now being abused under President Trump. And here in Chicago, we have seen the disastrous effects of when we trust a mayor to be Chicago's sole decision-maker and authority. Mayor Lightfoot has unilateral control of our schools, and teachers have to go on strike for 11 days to win basic necessities for our children, like nurses. Mayor Lightfoot has unilateral control over the issuance of demolition permits, and we have seen what happened with Hillco, where a failure in this administration's demolition oversight left Little Village residents covered in debris and dust. As Chicago's teachers, parents, and students learned just months ago, when it comes to this mayor, you have to put it in writing. And so, we have sought to put into writing guarantees that an equity lens will be applied to federal emergency dollars. That reasonable request was maligned, ignored, and dismissed. I will not malign, ignore, or dismiss the Chicagoan fighting for equity in the appropriation of federal emergency dollars. The Action Center on Race and the Economy states, quote, "It is important for city council members to play an active role in deciding the specific types of federal eligible programs they want to authorize and the types they want to restrict to ensure their constituents' interests are represented." The Action Center on Race and the Economy Further States that we can use these funds to ensure that it reaches the hardest-hit communities that are impacted by COVID-19. The other night, Carol Marine of W C said this power grab is reminiscent of Emmanuel and Daley, and that caucus pushback and council pushback was rational. Mike Donkey said that we are elected officials, and that what we are saying is, this is supposed to be a democracy. This is supposed to be good government. That's something that this mayor campaigned on. Absent these equitable provisions, absent these true oversight provisions, I cannot support this ordinance. And I just want to point out one last thing. There has been a mistruth that has been said about this ordinance. It's been said that it's needed in order to buy PPE expeditiously. Multiple municipal procurement experts, as well as the legal counsel of the City Council at the Budget Committee, made it very clear that that is simply false. The mayor has the power that she has right now to procure PPE. She's been doing it. So, to say that this ordinance and not voting for it is somehow blocking PPE to the hardest-hit communities and to our health professionals is a lie. It was a lie created at the last minute to try and push this forward. So, I'm proud to stand with the Illinois Nurses Association in this fight for equity in our city's COVID-19 response. The Illinois Nurses Association is our state's largest, most powerful nurses' union, and their members are on the front lines of the fight against COVID-19. They are asking us to vote no on this ordinance unless it includes an equity lens, unless it includes true oversight to make sure that this money gets to our hardest-hit communities. I urge my colleagues to vote no. I urge my colleagues to say yes to equity, true oversight, for us to do our jobs and not abdicate our responsibility to me as a council to have oversight over the city's purse. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I want to echo the divorce of Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa, because it's important that I think the public and my colleagues understand the importance of this vote. I heard from my colleagues about the importance of co-governance. And this is not co-governance. For way too long, we have had a city... For way too long, we have had a city that was dominated by elites, by corporations and developers. Those are the same actors that want to continue to run the city without accountability, leaving behind people of color, Black and Brown communities that today are suffering. We have across the wards, and I want to speak directly to my colleagues, you all know the necessities of Black communities who have been disproportionately affected by this virus, this pandemic. Seventy percent of the fatalities in our communities, undocumented residents that are yet to receive necessary support. The hungry families, families that suffer from hunger, cannot pay the rents, they cannot afford their mortgages, and they need answers. We have heard that from the public today, the needs of small businesses. The best major Chicagoans were struggling today. This is the time that we come together. This is the time that we govern with integrity, with responsibility, with unity. The people of Chicago did not vote for unilateral decisions, no matter who they were, whether it was the local alderman or the mayor. They voted for accountability and transparency. And I want to go back to what happened in Little Village, because it's important that the public understand what is at stake here. On March 31st, Alderman Hopkins and I sent a letter directed to the mayor's office warning about the issue with pollutants in our community. That's two weeks in advance of what happened in Little Village with a permit, and we were questioning permits that were given. When we were questioning that, and we had not only Alderman, but our state representatives, we have experts, that letter was never responded. There was a response after the fact what happened in Little Village and Hillco is an atrocity. Furthermore, I'm very concerned, not only about the lack of response, but just after the whole scandal started to wipe down, we start hearing that apparently now there are big supporters of the Hillco company in Little Village, that there are apparently very big supporters over there who have a community that had to breathe dust. We have to breathe dust in our communities in the middle of a pandemic. What we need is accountability. We need co-governance in order for us to make good decisions and bring the resources that our communities need. We cannot go back to the times where there were one mayor overseeing everything, an rubber-stamp council. My colleagues, I speak to you who have constituents that are suffering today about the importance of voting your conscience on this. Vote for your constituents. Make sure that we have the necessary resources for testing, to test our constituents. Make sure that we have the necessary resources for housing, for homelessness. We have people who are hungry again and are repeat, and they need those resources. We can no longer go back again to those times where bankers were running our schools, where bankers were giving themselves big salaries and lending money and borrowing money with toxic interest rates. We can no longer go back to those times when unilateral decisions impose a horrific parking meter system that privatized our parking system and disproportionate pay affect people of color. We today must come together for governance, co-governance. We want to work together. We have put amendments. The last thing I'd like to say is that on April 19th, we also sent a letter with amendments that we wanted to consider. I welcome my colleagues who have been pushing for more amendments. That only happened after the council mobilized that we were able to get some amendments for a sunset date to make sure that we impose and we don't let companies to contract without economic disclosure statements. We cannot go back to those times. This is our opportunity to come together. By the way, we still have gotten a response on those amendments, and that's the reason why I urge you, I urge you to vote no, to vote to make sure that we have co-governance, that we have a council that governs. I want to urge you, all my colleagues, to think about your constituents. This is our time to come together. This is our time to be the leaders that they expect us to be in crisis. This is not the time to leave blank checks to anyone, and this is a matter of issues. This is not personal. We can no longer continue with these personal attacks when something doesn't go our way. This is the time to be the leaders and lead by example. This is a time for compassion, for collaboration, and co-governance, and I urge you to think your vote, think for your constituents. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President, the members of the council. Just a couple of points here that I think we need to truly look at and understand. In no way, shape, or form do I believe, or do I believe members of this council believe that we are to block the specific execution of the executive office, meaning that we should not block the ability of our executive to respond to the impending emergency that exists that we have currently. As it relates to buying protective gear, telling our departments what to do, all of those things, we as city council are not directly in the mix of that. That is the executive's responsibility in her purview to oversee. So as it relates to the conversation around appropriations and how and when and where we will spend money, I fully believe that is something that we as a city council should set parameters on and definitely weigh in. So there are two pieces of conversation here today as it relates to this appropriation from that aspect of it. Again, we started at one point about the ability to spend money to give the procurement officer the ability to spend above the $500,000 limit. If those things are necessary, again, I have no objection to that. What I do have objection to is our ability to weigh in and vote about the policy of how the balance of our funds is going to be spent. There are two pots of money here that's hard to remember. There's the Stafford Act money, which is the money for the direct expenses of the emergency which were under, which our budget director estimates to be between $150 to $200 billion, with a seventy-five percent share of those dollars being borne by the federal government and the possibility of a hundred percent being borne by the federal government. The question that I think we have to ask ourselves today is, with the balance of the CARES Act money, which could be anywhere between $470, which is what we have today, or $420-some-odd billion if we have to use that money to pay our twenty-five percent share of the estimated $200 million, what is it that we do with that money? As a council, I believe that we should have the ability to appropriate those dollars and that not be strictly an executive decision. The decision to put money toward technology for our public school childrens or to create hotspots, or the ability for us to dedicate funds to rental or mortgage relief, all of these items are something that should be subject to debate and subject to a vote by this body. These are items that should not just unilaterally be determined by the executive branch whereby where you may have a seat in a working group. But again, I think our residents sent us down here to make decisions and to vote. I do not want to go to the table in a room such as that as a beggar. My constituents didn't send me down here to be a beggar. They sent us down here to make policy, to make rational choices, and to work with everyone so we can have what is best for the city in its entirety. So I would just ask us that if we feel that it's okay to essentially give up our roles in setting forth a policy and directing where funds are going to be spent outside of the emergency, I mean, the after-effects, the mortgage relief, the business relief, the technology needs. All of these are eligible expenses under the grant as stated on the website of the Department of Treasury. I believe that we should have not only a voice, but a vote in how those things are going to occur. Again, not saying that our mayor should not be able to act and respond with the emergency. There's almost $200 million worth of money the federal government is giving us for that. It is the additional funds that I believe that we need to have a voice. So again, this question, I think, may in some respects be muddled, but if we say yes today, we will not have a vote or a voice on how the balance of this action will occur. So with that, I would just ask that we reconsider this matter and that we work as a collective body to have a voice in how we determine the balance of the funding be spent as it relates to the CARES Act and any additional money that may come out of the CARES Act that is not used for direct expenses such as personal protective equipment, hospital expenses, and the like. So if we could, you know, we could think about it in that standpoint, I think we may come up with a different answer. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo the comments made by my colleagues. I want to speak to the fact that we are talking about this expenditure of funds that need to be used for the emergency, for emergency relief, to address this emergency. The issue is that a lot of the issues related to this emergency are structural issues that we have been dealing with for a very long time. COVID-19 didn't cause homelessness. COVID-19 didn't bring poverty or violence. And all of these things are threatening the lives of our people, the fact that people are not able to have a roof over their head, the fact that domestic violence is on the rise, and all of these things are part of this emergency. So I wanted to read an excerpt from the Congressional Research Services Section 5001D of the CARES Act that explains what some of these funds can be used for, and I think this is a really important thing for people to know as we talk about how we need to be using these funds with equity. So according to the Congressional Research Services, the CARES Act allows state and local governments to use funds from the CRF or Coronavirus Relief Fund to pay for programs that, number one, are necessary expenditures incurred due to public health emergency with respect to coronavirus disease 2019; number two, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of the date of enactment, March 27, 2020, of this section for the state or government; and number three, were incurred during the period that began March 1, 2020 and ends on December 30, 2020. I think it is important for us in the council to be able to have a say on how we're going to be addressing this emergency, how these programs are going to be affecting the lives of people that are seeing their lives threatened by a lot of things, not only getting sick with coronavirus, but all that this virus is causing in our community, from unemployment to the fact that people can't ensure that they're going to have a roof over their head. So I urge my colleagues also to vote no on this ordinance, and I really hope that we can start working more together to ensure an equitable response in this city. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just going to speak very briefly to the revised ordinance before us and remind my colleagues that I was one of the vocal critics of the original proposal, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for listening to us and pulling back that original proposal and limiting the scope by building in important things like a termination date of June 30th, by requiring the budget director to make weekly reports to the city council. And I want to also clear up what seems to be a point of confusion. The vast majority of the funds that we're discussing here will be brought before the city council to be appropriated. Another important thing I think that should be noted is that the vast majority of the funds we're talking about are COVID-related reimbursable. And then for those folks who really still don't feel comfortable with this, I think I should remind everyone that the general public, the Chicago taxpayers, will be applying a critical eye to the decisions that this administration makes and the city council makes over the next several months, and there will be an accounting for that. But I ultimately have faith in Mayor Lightfoot to be judicious with these special powers that we give to her. We certainly are not being asked to sit in the truck anymore. I look at this as riding shotgun, but allowing the administration the flexibility they need to be nimble to negotiate contracts for PPE and for testing supplies. I think that's important. And in that unique circumstance, and frankly, the fact we're all dealing with global pandemic, justifies us allowing these unique powers for a limited amount of time. And so I do support the ordinance, and for that purpose, Madam President, I move to call the previous question.
Ms. Alderman Haddon looking to speak?
I called the previous question.
Alderman Riley has called the question. If you support ending debate and moving forward with a vote on Chairman Dowell's motion, vote yea. If not, vote nay.
Point of order, Madam President, by Alderman Lopez?
Alderman Lopez?
There's no second to this motion, which means there's nothing to vote on, Madam President.
There's no second required, Madam President?
There is no second required, Alderman Lopez. I'm sure you're very familiar with the rules. This body doesn't require a second. So we are now moving forward on Alderman Riley's motion to call the question. If you want to support the motion, end debate, and move to Chairman Dowell's motion, vote yea. If not, vote nay. Mr. Clerk?
Alderman Lisparra?
Nay.
I'm sorry, Alderman Lisparra?
Nay?
Alderman Hopkins?
Yes.
Alderman Dowell?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Nay.
Alderman Hairston?
Alderman Hairston?
Nay.
Alderman Sawyer?
Alderman Sawyer? No.
Alderman Sawyer?
No.
Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Mitchell?
Aye.
Is that I, Alderman?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Beal?
No.
Alderman Zaloski Garza?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Burke? Alderman Burke? Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Coleman?
No.
Alderman Moore?
No.
Alderman Curtis?
Yea.
Alderman O'Shea?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Alderman Brookins?
No.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Tavarez?
Aye.
Alderman Scott?
Yea.
Alderman Sichu Lopez?
No.
Alderman Maldonado?
No.
Alderman Burnett?
Yes.
Alderman Irvin?
No.
Alderman Telafiero?
Aye, yes.
Alderman Ramoyas?
Aye.
Alderman Cardona?
Yes.
Alderman Wagasback?
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez?
No.
Alderman Austin?
Yes.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa?
No.
Alderman Vegas?
Yes.
Alderman Mits?
Yes.
Alderman Spazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Nugent?
Yes.
Alderman Vescas?
No.
Alderman Apolitano?
No.
Alderman Riley?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Tony?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Keppelman?
No.
Alderman Martin?
Yes.
Alderman Osterman?
Yes.
Alderman Haddon?
No.
Alderman Silverstein?
Yes.
Alderman Burke?
No.
Your Honor, there are thirty ayes and twenty nays.
The motion to call the question is granted. Chairman Dowell? Chairman Dowell, please proceed.
Yes, um, Madam President, uh, I, if there's no other comment, I move that, uh, we have a vote on this matter.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. And to be clear, what you're voting on is, uh, the emergency, um, ordinance. A yea vote is supportive of the, of the ordinance, and a nay vote is against it. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Spada?
No.
Alderman Hopkins?
No.
Alderman Dowell?
Aye.
Alderman King?
No.
Alderman Hairston?
No.
Alderman Sawyer?
No.
Alderman Mitchell?
No.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Beal?
No.
Alderman Zeloski Garza?
Aye.
Alderman Thompson?
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Burke?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Coleman?
No.
Alderman Moore?
No.
Alderman Curtis?
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor? Alderman Taylor?
No.
Alderman Brookins? Alderman Brookins?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
No.
Alderman Tavarez?
Aye.
Alderman Scott?
Aye.
Alderman Sichu Lopez?
No.
Alderman Maldonado?
No.
Alderman Burnett?
Yes.
Alderman Irvin?
No.
Alderman Telfiaro?
Aye.
Alderman Roboyas?
Aye.
Alderman Cardona?
Yes.
Alderman Wagasback?
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez?
No.
Alderman Austin?
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa?
No.
Alderman Vegas?
Aye.
Alderman Miz?
Aye.
Alderman Spazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Nugent? I'm sorry, Alderman Nugent? Is that I, Alderman?
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Vescas?
No.
Alderman Napolitano?
No.
Alderman Riley?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Tony?
Aye.
Alderman Gardner?
Aye.
Alderman Campbellman?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
No.
Alderman Osterman?
Aye.
Alderman Haddon?
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein? Alderman Silverstein?
Aye.
Your Honor, there are, there are 29 ayes, 21 nays.
Alderman Thompson for, on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion to reconsider the last vote?
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
No.
The noes have it, the motion for reconsideration is denied. Committee reports. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met March 12, 2020. I will call item number six first, which is an ordinance concerning the sale of city-owned property located at 3518 and 3520 South Halsted Street, and the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Our Revival Chicago LLC for the restoration of the Ramova Theater located in the 11th Ward. The citation was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by roll call vote. This is in Alderman Thompson's word. I didn't know if Alderman Thompson wished to speak on it.
Alderman, Alderman Clerk, I'm sorry, the Chairman, uh, Mr. Clerk, let me try it one more time.
Madam President? Madam President?
Uh, yeah, um, the Chair recognizes, uh, Alderman Thompson.
Sorry. Yeah, I, and we've had a lot of debate. I, I just, uh, just wanted to say that this is gonna be a great project for our ward in the city of Chicago, and I'll keep my comments very brief. And I just want to thank, uh, members of the committee and the structure request that the, uh, council support this project. It's gonna be great for the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. Now again, Mr. Clerk, if no one else chooses to speak, please call the roll.
Alderman Spada?
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins?
Aye.
Alderman Dowell?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Hairston?
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer? Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Mitchell? I'm sorry, Alderman?
Aye.
Alderman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Beal?
Aye.
Alderman Zeloski Garza? Alderman Garza? Alderman Thompson?
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Burke?
Aye.
Alderman Lopez?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
No.
Alderman Curtis?
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Brookins?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Tavarez?
Aye.
Alderman Scott?
Aye.
Alderman Sichu Lopez?
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado?
Aye.
Alderman Burnett?
Aye.
Alderman Irvin?
Aye.
Alderman Telfiaro?
Aye.
Alderman Roboyas?
Aye.
Alderman Cardona?
Aye.
Alderman Wagasback?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez? Alderman Sanchez? Alderman Austin?
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa?
Yes.
Alderman Vegas?
Aye.
Alderman Miz? Alderman Miz? Alderman Spazaro?
Aye.
Alderman Nugent? Alderman Nugent?
Yes.
Alderman Vescas?
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano?
Aye.
Alderman Riley?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Tony?
Aye.
Alderman Gardner?
Aye.
Alderman Campbellman?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Osterman?
Aye.
Alderman Haddon?
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein?
Aye.
Alderman Zeloski Garza? Alderman Garza? Your Honor, there are 49 ayes, no nays.
Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. A, uh, motion to reconsider the last vote?
Nay.
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 No.
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 The motion for reconsideration apparently fails. Thank you. Uh, the Chair recognizes Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Going back to item number one, this is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $15 million in multifamily program funds and the execution of a funding loan agreement with Casa Veracruz LLC for the acquisition and redevelopment of 155 affordable housing units in various locations across the fallen wards, 15th, 22nd, 24th, and 25th. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee on the previous vote, uh, most favorable of the committee, roll call vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two is an ordinance authorizing the restructure of a loan and the provision of a multifamily housing loan of up to $1 million, and the provision of a multifamily housing loan to Heartland Phoenix House LLC to finance ongoing and future rehabilitation of the building located at 1251 South Sawyer Avenue. The citation was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by the, the first most favorable roll call vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number three is the appointment of Helene D. Gale as a member of the Chicago Community Catalyst Fund Board. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by the first roll call vote.
And Chairman, uh, Wagasback, do you also, uh, want to, uh, link this with the, the first, um, motion for reconsideration as well?
And the first, uh, motion for reconsideration on item, uh, number six. Yes, ma'am?
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
One second, ma'am. Item number four is the appointment of Gloria Castillo as a member of the Chicago Community Catalyst Fund Board. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by roll call vote and the subsequent, uh, motion to reconsider, failed motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is the reappointment of Juan Carlos Avila as a member of the Chicago Community Catalyst Fund Board. The citation was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by the first roll call vote and, uh, subsequent failed motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number seven is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of tax increment financing funds and corporate funds for the implementation of the Invest Southwest Program. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by the roll call vote, first roll call vote, and the subsequent failed, uh, motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, again, uh, the point for Invest Southwest, I must reiterate, uh, the exclusion of the community of Garfield Park, uh, that's part of this program. Uh, Garfield Park is the heart of the West Side of Chicago, and for this community to be excluded, I think it's not in the best interest of the West Side and of the city in its entirety. If Garfield Park rises, I believe the city of Chicago will rise right along with it. So, uh, while I will support this because the communities of Austin, the communities of North Lyondale, and other communities on the West Side are, are specifically noted, I must speak to the exclusion, uh, of Garfield Park in this, uh, in, in, in this endeavor. And I hope that the members of your staff and administration will take note of this and, and really put the dedicated and necessary resources in for the communities of Eastern West Garfield Park because they are the heart of the West Side of Chicago. Thank you.
Alderman Irvin, as you've raised this issue before, I will respond in kind, as I have. As you well know, as we've explained to you multiple times, this initial foray in Invest Southwest is a beginning, not an ending. Um, and we chose, uh, the communities, uh, after a lot of study and analysis, uh, we are looking to build upon it, um, as we move into implementing this first phase of Invest Southwest. Um, if there are no other comments, um, the Chair recognizes...
Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Tha- thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and I echo, obviously, my colleague in, in terms of the Invest Southwest. I want to add, and this is the second phase, you talked about the first phase, and that's great. Uh, um, in light of what's going on in, in Little Village and, and Bryant Park, I want to make sure those communities are part of your second phase, and I just want to make that point and, and obviously for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I don't believe any other members have, uh, raised their hand to speak. So I'm going back to Chairman, uh, Wagasback.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, President. I move passage by the first most favorable vote of the Committee on Finance and the subsequent mo- unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Uh, items eight through 20 are all ordinances amending the expiration dates of certain TIFs to bring them into compliance with state law. The following TIFs are affected. Item eight through 20, it was the Woodlawn TIF, Roosevelt Union TIF, Roosevelt Cicero TIF, Portage Park TIF, Jefferson Park Business District TIF, North Cis Road TIF, Near North TIF, Holman Arlington TIF, Clark Street and Ridge Avenue TIF, 11th Street Kesey Avenue TIF, excuse me, that's 11th Street Kesey Avenue Business District Plan, 79th Street Quarter TIF, the Clark Montrose TIF, and the Western and Ogden TIF. I move passage, unless anyone wishes to speak on this, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number 21 is an ordinance amending chapters 3 dash 43 and 3 dash 44 of the Municipal Code of the City of Chicago regarding taxes on shipments of retail bottled water and alcoholic beverages from outside Chicago. The citation was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item 22 is an ordinance amending chapter 4 dash 156 of the Municipal Code of the City of Chicago regarding amusement, tax, and admission fees for tour boat operators. The citation was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I'd like to move for passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 23 is an ordinance amending section 9 dash 100 dash 030B of the Municipal Code of the City of Chicago regarding vehicle parking, standing, or compliance violations. The citation was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on it, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Uh, the Chair recognizes, uh, Alderman Irvin. Just advise, Alderman, if you want to speak, please raise your hand as quickly as possible so we can move that expeditiously. Alderman Irvin?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, what's to be recorded is known on, on that, uh, last ordinance.
So reflected.
Okay.
Chairman Wegasback.
Madam President, item twenty-four is an ordinance amending section two dash thirty-two dash zero three one of the Municipal Code of the City of Chicago to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to procure an owner-controlled insurance program or OCEP insurance policy for construction and operations at Chicago's airports. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on this particular item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number twenty-five is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number twenty-six will be held until further notice as the committee will not be issuing permits for solicitation while the city remains under stay-in-place orders. Items twenty-seven and twenty-eight consist of authorizations for the payment of very small claims against the city and denials of payments of very small claims against the city. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, could you give me a second, please?
Sure.
Madam President, item twenty-nine A is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement in the case of Joanna Palmer as administrator of the estate of Romella Palmer, deceased, versus the City of Chicago. I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider with the exception that Alderman Lopez Nugent Spazato Quinn Thompson Moore Gardner Beal Napolitano and Cardona wish to be recorded as voting no on item twenty-nine A. And I'll pause for a second to see if anybody else would like to be recorded as voting no.
There are no other, uh, Aldermen who wish to be recorded as voting no based upon raising their hand. So hearing no objection with those votes, no votes noted? So ordered.
Okay. Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance from last month, and thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Wegasback. Next is the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, Chairman Viegas.
Madam President, members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on March tenth, twenty twenty. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Items one through five are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. Number one is Thompson Paspalas and Alexander Theohars to SSA number sixteen in the Great Town Hostic Commission. Wallace S. Anderson to SSA number twenty-four, Clark Street Commission. Benetta Roy to SSA number forty-two, Seventy-first Street Sony Commission. Mario Correa to SSA number sixty-two, the Soganos Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item six is a substitute ordinance for the designation of portions of East Ninety-Fifth Street Tax Increment Financing District and approval of tax allocation financing for redevelopment and projects. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is a substitute ordinance for support of Class L tax incentive property at two twenty-six West Jackson Boulevard. This item will not be reported out, is instead being held until the applicants for the tax incentive are satisfied to respond to requests polled during the committee members' March meeting.
So ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Viegas. The Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, Chairman Cardenas.
Madam President and members of the City Council reporting for your Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, which held a meeting on Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty to consider one item, a resolution twenty nineteen dash seven four six. A recommendation was made to pass, uh, which was concurred by voice vote for all committee members with no dissenting votes. Uh, there is one, uh, additional item that I'd like for the council to know. On April twentieth, Alderman Viegas did however invoke Rule fourteen to formally recuse himself from voting on this item. And I do have it in my processional letter, uh, written April twenty, twenty twenty. The states please be advised that pursuant City Council Rule fourteen in section two dash one five six dash zero eight zero six B of the Municipal Code of Chicago, I invoke Rule fourteen, and I recuse myself from participation in voting in the following record on the agenda on the City Council in January fifteen, twenty twenty. That concludes my report, Madam Chair. If there are no other questions, then I yield.
Chairman Cardenas, you need to move for a vote on the...
I moved passage, I'm sorry, I moved passage with the last roll call vote of the Finance Committee.
Can you please let the Alderman finish? When you talk over each other, it's very difficult to understand. I'm going to ask Chairman Cardenas to repeat his motion. And then again, you wish to speak, please raise your hand and identify yourself.
Again, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, again, I move passage of this item with the, uh, last favorable vote on the Finance Committee, the first item, and its reconsideration. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you. Someone had put my screen, but I hopefully I'm still there somehow. I would just ask you, in the past when, um, somebody had to, um, recuse themselves from voting, I thought the new ordinance is, he had to explain why, and in the past I've always, we've been hearing why. I didn't hear why he had to recuse himself. Usually somebody says because somebody is a partner in a firm or something like that, and if that's not the case, then fine, but I thought that's what the ordinance that we passed stated.
Madam President.
Yes, Chairman Cardenas.
Uh, I know this is out of order now since the item I've, uh, I quoted in my remarks, but if members of the body would like to know the explanation, can obviously the letter is in front of me, and does state the reason for his recusal. And if I may, uh, through, uh, through the chair, uh, able to, um, to read that, I'll do that.
You can summarize it, uh, Chairman Cardenas.
Thank you. The letter does state that within the preceding twelve months, uh, I was a member of the consulting firm, this is Alderman Viegas, mind you, that worked for a micro gas, AKA, Slaughter Company. And although I had divested from the firm, I was not involved in this matter and did not receive any income or compensation for this matter. Out of abundance of caution, I will abstain. That is the end of the letter. And should any questions, uh, be, uh, be raised, feel free to contact Alderman Viegas at seven seven three nine three one eleven thirty-six. Thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging.
Thank you.
Madam, I'm sorry. Madam President, this is Alderman Garza. I started, my internet went out. I'd like to be recorded as a yes vote on the first, um, meeting, the first vote on finance.
So noted, Alderman Garza. Alderman Cardenas' motion is to accept the Committee report with the recusal, as noted. If there are no further questions or objection, so ordered. All right. Next is Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. And members of the City Council reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a committee hearing, uh, Friday, March thirteenth. Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number one is a series of appointments and reappointments to the following committees: the Chicago Community Land Trust and the Chicago Low Income Housing Trust Fund Board. A reappointment to the Chicago Community Land Trust Board is Lisette Castaneda. Appointing to the Low Income Housing Trust Fund Board is Grace Chan McGivern, Arshel Stevens, Emilio Caruscello, Andrew Gere. Reappointments to that board are Tom McNulty, David Wells, Deborah Bennett, and Wayne Gordon. I move passage of the disordinance by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two is a license agreement between the Bucktown Community Organization for installation of a mural on the exterior wall of the Bucktown Wicker Park Ranch Library located in seventeen oh one north Milwaukee in the Thirty-second Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is the sale of Union Station air rights to Amtrak under the Right of First Offer Agreement in conjunction with Amtrak, Chicago Union Station Head House, and Union Station Transportation Center improvements in the Forty-second Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is the First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the Illinois, University of Illinois for continued occupancy of office spaces within city-owned building located at six four one West Sixty-third Street in the Twentieth Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a third agreement, a lease agreement with the Illinois Sports Facility Authority governing use of the property at three three three, three 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 Southwest Thirty Fifth Street by the Chicago Police Department for driver training in the Eleventh Ward. I move passage of this item, the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is the First Amendment of a lease agreement with Vanguard Archives Holdings, Inc. for use of space within the building at three nine two zero South Michigan Avenue by the Chicago Police Department in the Third Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The final item, item number seven is a lease agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for use of the former South Shore High School at seventy-six oh one, seventy-six fifty-nine South Constance Avenue in the Eighth Ward by the Chicago Police Department. I move passage to this item with the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Licensing and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on Licensing and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on March eleventh, twenty twenty. Considered the following ordinance. Item number zero two zero one nine dash forty-one twenty-five, a substitute ordinance to amend the Municipal Code regarding provision of horse-drawn carriage introduced by Alderman Hopkins, Roddy, Lopez, and others. Madam President, uh, I move that this item be passed regarding the item, um, this order would be considered in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one on the Committee on Finance with the exception of Alderman Dow and Alderman Mitz voting no on this item in the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider, if there is no objection.
With those two caveats of the no votes, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Trying to raise my hand.
Oh. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you. Thank you. Just want to be recorded as a no vote on that. Thank you.
So noted.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to be heard on this particular item? If there were any other... You see a hand? Alderman Taylor?
Wait, one second. Just one second, folks. We follow the same procedure. If you want to be heard, raise your hand beforehand. We're pausing before we do anything so you can be recorded. But once we vote, we vote and we move on. But for this record, Alderman Taylor is also noted as a no vote. Chairman Mitz, does that conclude your report?
That would conclude that part of the report. There are four ordinance regarding moratoriums and various wards. It was the Sixth Ward, the Twenty-seventh Ward, Forty-third Ward, and the Forty-seventh Ward. These recommendations were also concurred again by a highest vote of the members of the License Committee on March eleventh. Madam President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one on the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report for the Committee on Licensing and Consumer Protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Mitz. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the Council. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which the meeting was held on Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty. Before the committee, there were two hundred and fifty-six items. There were two hundred and thirty-nine routine traffic items that passed and seventeen routine traffic items that did not pass. There was one item that passed, an amendment of Municipal Code seven dash three eight dash one one seven by establishing mobile food vehicle stands on portions of North Franklin Street introduced by Alderman Brandon Rowley, Forty-second Ward. If there is no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances and the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
So ordered. And hearing no objections, so ordered. Uh, Committee on Transportation in Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation in Public Way, a meeting which was held on March nineteenth, twenty twenty, the following ordinances are passed by majority of the members present. Pages two through twenty-two include two hundred and forty-six ordinances for grants and privileges introduced by local Aldermen from wards one through six, eight through fifteen, seventeen, nineteen through twenty-three, twenty-five through thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-nine through fifty. Page twenty-three includes nine ordinances for canopies introduced by local Aldermen from wards one, two, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-seven, and forty-two. Pages twenty-four through fifty-eight include four hundred and ten ordinances for sidewalk cafes introduced by local Aldermen from wards one through five, eleven, twenty-five through twenty-eight, thirty-one through thirty-three, and thirty-eight through forty-five, uh, forty-nine. Under Rule fourteen of the Rules of Order and Procedure for the Chicago City Council, Alderman Tony abstains from voting on the following items: a sidewalk cafe number zero two zero two zero dash one six one five and zero two zero two zero dash one six one six. Both are located in the Forty-fourth Ward. On pages fifty-nine through sixty-one include twenty-three ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local Aldermen from wards two, eight, eleven, fourteen, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-nine, forty-two, forty-three, forty-five, forty-seven, and forty-nine. Page sixty-two includes a subdivision ordinance located in the Ninth Ward. Under Rule fourteen of the Rules of Order and Procedure of the City of Chicago, Alderman Thompson abstains from voting on the following item: subdivision zero two zero two zero one eight zero five located in the Sixth Ward. On page sixty-three includes two vacation ordinance and one transfer ordinance located in the Sixth, Twenty-fourth, and Thirty-second Ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. And in all fairness, I mean, if it's in our ordinance, and again, every other City Council meeting, we've done it. If it's not the case, then fine, but I don't want any favoritism. If, if we're going to be, people are going to be, um, recusing themselves, we have to state the reason because I recall the ordinance stating that. So I just want it to be consistent because we've done it with other people, and I just want it to be consistent with the ordinance.
So...
Thompson, uh, recused himself on some, so I think the reason should be stated if that's stated in the ordinance.
Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. So in abundance of caution, since Alderman Tony is a restaurateur...
So in abundance of caution, since Alderman Tony is a restaurateur and needs a restaurant in his ward to avoid the appearance of improper propriety, he's recusing himself. With respect to Alderman Thompson, either he or a member of his firm is a representative of a member, uh, or someone associated with the, uh, or with the subdivision ordinance.
So, uh, Alderman, uh, Brookins, I believe that you, um, have a motion.
Right. So if there is no further objection, I move passage of these items with the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
And, uh, Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, Chairman Tony.
Madam President and members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on March sixteen, twenty twenty. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains the amendment of municipal code chapters seventeen-ten and seventeen-seventeen by adding new sections, that being seventeen-ten, ten oh one, and seventeen-seventeen, zero-two-five-one-point-five, concerning electric vehicles and electric vehicle supply equipment. I here I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee, we report an un, associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one contains the amendment of Chicago's Sustainable Development Policy to prioritize bird collision deterrent strategies for building projects to reduce avian mortality and injury. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one contains the amendment of municipal code section thirteen sixty-four dash one-fifty to further regulate standards for installation of smoke alarms and smoke detectors, which passed by a roll call vote of nine to three. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection, noting that Alderman Telefiero would like to be recorded as voting no on this matter.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would also like to be recorded as a no, and also just as a, um, point, um, this was brought up in committee with none of our, um, representation from the Chicago Fire Department, from whom I understand, uh, um, opposed this. It was, um, unfortunate and a little embarrassing that the firemen in front of another, um, municipality had to come in and, um, testify. And for me, our firefighters, as we're dealing with this pandemic, we're trusting in those subject matter experts. The firemen in our community, in our fire department, our leadership there are our subject matter experts and going in every day saving lives. And, uh, for whatever reasons, um, that they oppose this, I have to side with those, um, subject matter experts, and I wish they would have had the opportunity to come before the committee and, um, speak to us. So without me having the support of the fire, um, department on an issue, um, that relates to them, I, I cannot support, um, this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Veal.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I too wanted to join on a no vote on this particular ordinance. Uh, I was in committee and the fire chief was not informed about this hearing and the fire department is not in support of, uh, the smoke detector ordinance. And I think it's really disheartening that the department that we rely on on a day-to-day basis was not, number one, informed, and then, number two, does not support this particular ordinance. And lastly, this ordinance is going to add a undue burden on our taxpayers and our senior citizens who are already struggling to make ends meet. And now we want to require them to, uh, purchase smoke detectors that are much more expensive, batteries that are much more expensive, and I just think we're doing ourselves a disservice by putting this ordinance in and putting those extra burdens on the senior citizens, especially in this crisis. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I too wish to ri, virtually rise in opposition of this ordinance, um, building on what my colleagues have previously mentioned, um, but also concerned that, as we've seen during this pandemic, we are continuing to talk to our communities, believing that they're at a particular point, but not seeing where they truly are. And asking them to meet the standards listed in this municipal ordinance is an unacceptable burden on many of the black and brown communities, not only that I represent, but that exist throughout the city of Chicago. And we must rethink this. We should have put the pause on this when our own fire department was not participating or supporting of this. And I think it's a mistake to proceed forward with it today, and I would urge all of my colleagues to vote no on this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too, uh, oppose this ordinance. Uh, after speaking with our commissioner in regards to it, as Alderman Veal has already forestated, I see this as being an additional burden on the city as well as taxpayer, because when they attempt to purchase it, it will cost more than those that are in place now, uh, and are given now by the fire department. So I would like it to be recorded as voting no on this item. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin. You're muted, sir. You're still muted. Sound good, though? Well, why don't we come back to you while you figure out the technical problems? I'm gonna go to Alderman Curtis, and then we'll come back to you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I too, my sentiments are the same. Uh, I'm voting no on this item. I don't feel that, uh, especially our senior population will be able to, uh, afford, um, uh, a ten-year, uh, smoke detector. So I'll be voting no on this item also. Thank you.
Alderman Irvin, can we try again? You're still, you're still muted for some reason. Now you're unmuted. The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, this was tough, but, you know, this is, this has been something that we've been working on for quite some time. And reality is that back in two thousand and seventeen, the General Assembly, uh, passed state legislation that required every dwelling to have this ten-year, ten-year battery. Chicago is exempted. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for Chicago to get into this legislation, follow suit. The, the reason I, I've allowed for time, uh, for this to come to compliance, uh, twenty-twenty-three is when this actually complies. And I would also add that most smoke detectors last ten years or so. If you've purchased a smoke detector, once that shot light has expired, that's when you have to go from the old technology into the new technology. The fact that you have, uh, these fires that have, these fires that have killed people, uh, not because of the fire, but more because of the smoke inhalation, is, is, is based on the fact that there's not working smoke detector. Because just as we're supposed to, uh, make sure that we change the batteries twice a year, a lot of times life happens and people forget, this is a life-saving, uh, um, smoke detector that will, will, will last for ten years, has the technology and the capability of reminding you when your, when your smoke detector is going to, to run out and when it's time to change it. This is just, this, all this is, is just a upgrade, uh, with technology, and I would ask for favorable consideration of this.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to be recorded as no one's vote as well.
In, in the committee vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. So noted. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz. Alderman Mitz, you need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Madam Chairman, um, I'm here in the debate, and I'd like to be recorded as a no vote on this item.
So noted.
Hello? Hello?
All right, Alderman Irvin.
Oh, thank you. Uh, you didn't mute me, did you? Um, with all this is, is going on, it seems as if, uh, I wanted to make a motion to refer this back to the zoning committee, because there seems to be a lot of misinformation and a lack of understanding. So I put a motion to reserve, return this back to zoning committee.
Second.
Taking Alderman Lopez.
The, the motion on the floor is, is better. Back to the, uh, zoning committee. I assume, Alderman, you're asking for a roll call vote.
If it is necessary, if it is.
Madam, uh, Madam Chair, this is Alderman Vegas.
Alderman Vegas.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go ahead and just return it back to zoning so that we continue the law.
All right.
Call for roll call.
This is, so based on, based on.
One word. Please.
I, as I understand your, uh, Alderman, uh, Irvin has asked for this return, uh, to the zoning committee, Alderman Vegas, who's the sponsor. I said no objections, is that, is that correct, Alderman Vegas?
Yes, Madam President.
Madam Chair?
Alderman, Chairman Tony?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to be, uh, hold this in committee.
Second.
So the motion is, uh, for Chairman Tony to hold the ordinance on the smoke detectors in committee?
Uh, I would, uh, I would draw my motion, my motion for his, uh, pending further hearings, not just the hail, but further hearings. Is that agreeable, Chairman Tony?
You accept that, uh, that, that, uh, amendment, Chairman?
Yes, uh, Ben, uh, Ben will hold, uh, hold a hearing on this for committee, not just holding on this. We will have a committee hearing on it, on this item.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Okay, um.
Alderman Tony.
Back to the committee report, pages one through ten contain, contain various map amendments in the forty-eighth, forty-seventh, forty-fifth, forty-fourth, forty-second, the fortieth, thirty-eighth, thirty-fifth, thirty-second, thirty-first, twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth, twenty-fifth, twenty-third, twenty-first, the twentieth, fourteenth, eleventh, sixth, fifth, third, and first wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection, noting that on document number zero two zero two zero dash one five three for the property, uh, commonly known as thirty-six fifteen through thirty-six fifty-nine South Halsted Street, Alderman Thompson has abstained from voting under provisions of Rule fourteen.
And Chairman Tony, because I expect, uh, Alderman Moore to ask for the explanation, can you provide the basis for the Rule fourteen recusal?
Madam President, I believe he has an ownership interest in the properties and therefore, uh, needed to recuse himself. And I think his ward office is in there, too.
Oh, Madam President?
Yes, Alderman Thompson.
Thank you. I, I agree. To turn it around, I, I actually, I, I do not have a ownership interest. The property, the subject property is owned by the eleventh ward Democratic Party, and as a, out of an abundance of caution, um, I'm abstaining from voting on this particular matter. The zoning changed from a C district to the B district.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson, for that clarification. Alderman Tony?
Thank you, uh, Alderman Thompson, also. Uh, page ten contains various large signs over a hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade in the forty-fifth, the forty-fourth, the forty-second, the forty-first, thirty-ninth, twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth, twentieth, thirteenth.
If I can interrupt, I think we need to vote on the previous item before you move forward.
All right, so I'll renew my, uh, motion on, um, on that item by the last most favorable roll call vote of finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Let me start again on page ten, can vary, contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade in the forty-fifth, the forty-fourth, the forty-second, the forty-first, the thirty-ninth, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-fifth, twentieth, thirteenth, eleventh, and second wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
And page eleven contains two historical landmark designations in the forty-second and third ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection, with the exception of document number zero two zero two zero dash seven forty-three, the historical landmark designation for two twenty-six West Jackson, which is being held at the request of the Applicating Committee.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
That concludes the committee reports. Agreed calendar. Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from the city clerk, Anna M. Valencia, a total of ninety-eight items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following alderman and clerk Valencia. Uh, clerk Valencia, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Curtis, Alderman Brookins, Alderman here, Alderman Austin, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Tony, and Alderman Gardner. Um, hearing, I move passage of the agreed calendar in the honor of the police.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. A new business. The clerk will call the words beginning with the first.
My names, free permits, licensee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards.
Can't hear them.
Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Exemption for physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Laspie has proposed resolution to call for Governor J.B. Pritzker and the Illinois State Legislature to enact tax increment financing to support small businesses during state of Illinois disaster projections, which is referred to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section seven dash twenty-eight dash seven eighty-five to further regulate requirements for installation and maintenance of collection bins, which are referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Hopkins also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles four and eight concerning fines for violations of outdoor patio regulation, which are referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Hopkins also has proposed resolution to call for week of May seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty, as National Public Works Week, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Hopkins and Alderman Viesquez have proposed resolution to call for Governor J.B. Pritzker and Mayor Lori Lightfoot to issue executive orders to ensure confirmation of residential and commercial garbage and recycling services during COVID-nineteen pandemic, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Dowell has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for science signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman King has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code chapter two dash eight by adding new section two dash eight dash zero fifteen, requiring City Council approval for legislation during disaster, declared disaster, which is referred to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Alderman Sawyer and Alderman King have proposed resolution calling for hearings on the impact of proposed merger of Advocate Trinity Hospital, Mercy Hospital, and Medical Center, South Shore Hospital, and St. Bernard Hospital, which is referred to the Committee on Health which is referred to the committee on health and human relations. Alderman Sawyer and others have proposed resolution to call for Mayor Lori Lightfoot to publicly endorse reforms to the police union collective bargaining agreements, which is referred to the committee on workforce development. Alderman Beal has proposed resolution, call for hearings on mayoral executive order 2020-1 regarding contract executions, reallocation of appropriated funds, and temporary agreements for use and occupancy of real estate, which is referred to the committee on the budget and government operations. Alderman Semelaski, Garza, and others have proposed resolution to call for House Speaker Michael Manigan, Senate President Don Harmon, and the members of the Illinois General Assembly to place S.J.R.C.A. number 23, the Workers' Rights Amendment, on the November 3, 2020, state of Illinois general election ballot, which is referred to the committee on workforce development. Alderman Garza and others also have proposed resolution to call on the Illinois General Assembly to place H.J.R.C.A. 37, the Workers' Rights Amendment, on the November 3, 2020, general election ballot, which is referred to the committee on workforce development. Alderman Thompson has proposed ordinance for approval of a flat of liberty resubdivision, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Thompson also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for science signboards at 2477 South Archer Avenue, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Carverness has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, chapter 11-4, by modifying section 11-4-360 and adding new section 11-4-365 concerning enforcement of inspections and violations of environmental regulations, which is referred to the committee on environmental protection and energy. Alderman Carverness also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 17-13-0905C, to further regulate special uses within planned manufacturing districts, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Carverness also has proposed resolution to call for hearings to explore possible options for establishing free broadline internet for all households in the city of Chicago, which is referred to the committee on economic, capital, and technology development. Alderman Quinn has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, title 4, by modifying various sections prohibit the advertising, listing, renting, or booking of vacation rentals within restricted residential zones and establishing fines related for violations thereof, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Quinn also has proposed orders to call for a 90-day signature collection period for restricted residential zones for new or additional shared housing units or vacation rentals be told for duration of mayoral executive order 2020-10, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Burke and others have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 3-8-050, to recognize deaths of Chicago police officers, firefighters. Yes?
Like to be heard of finance.
Which matter was it, Alderman?
That would be Alderman Burke.
Two committees being called, the committee on public safety and the committee on finance, the matters referred to the committee on committees and rules. Alderman Lopez has proposed resolution for amendment of resolution establishing membership of the committee on budget and government operations, which is referred to the committee on committees and rules. Alderman Lopez also has proposed resolution to call for Chicago Housing Authority to accept and adopt waivers and updates issued under the Federal Care Act, which is referred to the committee on housing and real estate. Alderman Lopez and others have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, title 3, by adding new chapter 3-10 entitled Essential Municipal Employees Death Benefit Act, which is referred to the committee on finance. Alderman Coleman has proposed orders to call for establishment of a public private fund to assist in installation and maintenance of hand sanitizing stations in government, commercial, and residential facilities, which is referred to the committee on health and human relations. Alderman O'Shea has proposed orders for publication of public alleys adjacent to 113-03 through 11305 South Holston Avenue, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Brinkins has proposed resolution to call for the Chicago Board of Education to convey ownership of a property located at 8131 South Maitre Street to the Public Building Commission to facilitate sale of the property to Carol Properties for residential development, which is referred to the committee on housing and real estate. Alderman Brinkins has proposed order for the issuance of permits for science signboards at 8522 South Lafayette Avenue, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Ramirez has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for science signboards at various locations, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman DeBarr has proposed order for the issuance of permits for science signboards at 4354 West 63rd Street, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcohol and liquor licenses on a portion of West White Street, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcohol and liquor licenses on a portion of North Morgan Street, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to allow additional package of licenses on a portion of North Wall Street, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for science signboards, which are referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for the publication of public alleys in the area governed by West Kensington Street, North Peoria Street, Twonan Street, and North St. George Street, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Rags Attack has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, chapter 4-8, by adding new section 4-8-300 to regulate third-party food delivery services, which is referred to the joint committee of the committee on finance and the committee on license and consumer protection.
Rules.
Mr. Carter, rules.
Rules.
Two committees having been called, the matters referred to the committee on rules. Alderman Rags Attack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for science signboards, which are referred to the committee on license, zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Rags Attack and Alderman Carverness have proposed resolution in celebration of Earth Day and the call on Governor J.B. Pritzker to support local farmers, farmers markets, and nurseries to provide economic security to the local producers and ensure that Illinoisans have increased access to affordable and sustainable food during COVID-19 pandemic, which is referred to the committee on environmental protection and energy. Alderman Ramirez, Rosa, and others have proposed order to call for Chicago Budget Director to identify COVID-19 impacted special events, outdoor activities, and festivals, and draft ordinance limiting 2020 annual appropriation orders to reappropriate funds for these events to Chicago's COVID-19 Housing Assistance Plan, which is referred to the committee on the budget and government operations.
Finance.
Two committees being called, the matters referred to the committee on committees, rules, and ethics. Alderman Viegas has proposed orders to call for the Department of the Planning and Development Commissioner to update Cook County taxes and application criteria for city approval of all project-to-date utilization, projected utilization for property owners within certain business enterprise classifications, which is referred to the committee on economic, capital, and technology development. Alderman Viegas has proposed resolution to call for United States Congress to enact and fund National Water Affordability Program modeled after the Low and Young Home Energy Assistance Program, which is referred to the committee on economic, capital, and technology development. Alderman Thaddeus has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to allow additional package of licenses on a portion of West Irving Park Road, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Vasquez has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, chapter 2-152, by adding new section 2-152-105, requiring safety and protective equipment to be provided to persons employed or contracted to do work with the city of Chicago during disasters, which is referred to the committee on health and human relations. Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed resolution to call for Governor J.B. Pritzker to exercise emergency authority to cap excessive fees and surcharges to restaurants by third-party delivery apps and bring aid and relief to restaurants burden by stay-at-home order, which is referred to a joint committee of the committee on finance and the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Vasquez and others also have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, chapter 4-4, by adding new section 4-4-311, requiring licensed businesses to comply with emergency procedures issued by Governor Illinois and Mayor of the city of Chicago during declared disasters or emergency operations, which is referred to the committee on health and human relations. Alderman Napolitan has proposed order for the issuance of permits for science signboards.
I wish to be recognized.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce an additional ordinance to establish a new section 2-8-015 of municipal code to be assigned to the committee on health and human relations.
Alderman, you're out of order. As you are well aware, the clerk's office has a requirement that any ordinances must be posted 48 hours prior to council meeting.
Point order.
Orders has not been posted in that time period. I'm ruling that you're out of order.
Your point order, individual items only need to be listed on an agenda 48 hours in advance if a final action is to be taken at a meeting. Introduction is not a final act. We are at the presentation by Alderman, section of the agenda.
I disagree with your reading of the clerk's rules.
I feel the body.
I deny the motion. Mr. Clark, please proceed.
Okay.
Point of order, Madam President. Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe Alderman Vasquez asked to appeal the decision of the chair on the matter of whether or not this was in out of order. If this wasn't in fact out of order.
I did not hear Alderman Vasquez say that.
I did it in fact, you know, Madam Chair.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Clark, please proceed.
Alderman Napolitan has proposed order for the issuance of permits for science signboards at 8755 West Kensington Road, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 4-244-140, prohibiting pendulum in certain areas of the 42nd ward, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-130, concerning hours of operation for outdoor patio establishments within essential business district, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for science signboards, which are referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. And proposed orders for transfer funds within the city council legislative directorship for the year 2020, which is referred to the committee on budget and government operations. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for a location of a peace building place between North St. Street and North West Street, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Smith has proposed orders for honorary street designation as honorary John Frying Way, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Smith and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on juvenile intervention and support senators' operations, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the committee on the budget and government operations, committee on ethics and government oversight, and the committee on public safety. Alderman Smith and others have proposed orders requiring any individual over age of 2 to cover their nose and mouth with masks or cloth face covering when in public places, which is referred to the committee on health and human relations.
Rules.
Two committees being called, the matters referred to the committee on committees, rules, and committees and rules. Alderman Kaplan and Alderman Olsterman have proposed orders for honorary street designation as honorary Sullivan Long Way, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Martin has proposed order for the issuance of permits for science signboards at 4772 North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Martin and others have proposed resolution to call for Governor J.B. Pritzker to secure mortgage forbearance, waiver of mortgage-related late fees, and commitment to refrain from reporting late payments to credit reporting agencies for non-federal lenders and servicers of residential mortgages, which is referred to the committee on housing and real estate.
Finance.
Rules. Rules.
Two committees being called, the matters referred to the committee on committees and rules. Alderman Martin and others also have proposed orders to call for rent relief protection for renters who lost income during COVID-19 stay-at-home order, which is referred to the committee on housing and real estate.
Budget. Finance.
Two committees have, three committees have been called, committee on housing, budget, and finance, the matters referred to the committee on committees.
Point of order, Rose. Point of order, Rose, this is Alderman Rosa. Who called the separate committees?
I called budget. Riley called budget.
Okay, thank you. Who called finance for the record?
Riley called finance.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Hand has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, chapter 7-20, by adding new section 7-20-121, to establish regulations for senior buildings during public health emergencies, which is referred to the committee on health and human relations.
That concludes the calling of the wards.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Alderman Mitchell, for approval of the journals?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not aware of any corrections. I'm going to approve the journals for February 19, 2020, March 18, 2020, April 15, 2020, and April 22, 2020.
Hello?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Mitchell. Will the aldermen please make sure their microphones are muted? All those in favor of approving the journals signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Finished business, Alderman Mitchell? Miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any other miscellaneous business.
Part B, Alderman Lopez. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
This is Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President.
In accordance with rule 13, I would invoke my right for personal privilege at this time.
What is the nature of your motion, sir?
As it states in the rules, this allows me the opportunity to discuss when matters of a member's integrity, character, or motives have been assailed, questioned, or impugned. I wish to address that matter at this time.
And sir, during the course of this proceeding, how has your integrity been assailed?
Madam President, that is not up for debate. Is it my right per our rules and procedure to invoke this at this time?
I believe that you have to have a basis within the confines of this meeting, and you have to articulate that, otherwise I'm going to rule your motion out of order.
It is not according to our rules. As I quote, "The right of a member to address the council on a question of personal privilege shall be limited to cases in which his integrity, character, or motives are assailed, questioned, or impugned." It does not state that it has to be in this meeting. It has to be on topic of which I have a topic. So I am invoking my right to address that here in this body because my reputation, as well as the reputation and character of several members of this body have been impugned, and I demand my right per our rules to address this matter publicly.
You are out of order because they weren't done here.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
That's Alderman Austin. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm questioning in regards to Alderman Lopez in regards to his, he had several others' rights being impugned. But were they done in this body?
And I believe that based upon the previous question I asked, the answer was no.
And the rules do not require it to be as such, Madam President. It does not state that it has to be in chamber, which is why...
Alderman Lopez, I'm going to rule you out of order.
Then I appeal the decision of the chair to the body.
The question before the body is whether or not Alderman Lopez is out of order. The ruling of the chair is that Rule 13 applies to issues that are raised in the context of a proceeding before the body. All those...
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, Madam President.
No. This is Alderman Alderman Lopez. Can I get a clarification from Department of Attorney?
Madam President, I ask for a roll call on your, on the appeal.
This is Alderman Alderman Lopez. Can I get a point of order? Can I get a clarification from Department of Attorney on this? On their rule?
On their rule.
Madam President, there is no parliamentary...
In response to Alderman Alderman Alderman's request, I conferred with the Parliamentarian, and he concurs with my interpretation of Rule thirteen. Alderman Lopez has asked for a roll call vote on the ruling of the Chair, which is that his order, his motion on Rule thirteen is out of order because he has not identified any way in which during the course of this proceeding, his or anyone else's integrity was impugned. So, a yes vote is sustaining the ruling of the Chair. Move on. Alderman, Mr. Clark, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Masada.
Nay.
Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Sawyer.
No.
Was that Alderman Harrison?
Yes, it was.
Alderman Harrison votes no. Alderman Sawyer.
Uh, no.
Alderman Sawyer votes no. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Gil.
No.
Alderman Sevloski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez.
Uh, no.
Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Is that aye, Alderman Brookins?
Yeah.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Vargas.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sijo Lopez.
No.
Alderman Alderman Alderman. Alderman Bernett.
Aye.
Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Talfiaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagisack.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Diego.
Aye.
Alderman Nix. Alderman Nix. Alderman Cuzado.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent.
Alderman Nix, I.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vazquez.
No.
Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Honey.
Aye.
Alderman Garner.
Aye.
Alderman Kaplan.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Manhattan.
No.
Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Your Honor, there are thirty-five days and thirteen days.
The ruling of the Chair is sustained. Alderman Mitchell, I believe that we were in the midst of miscellaneous business, so let's go back there.
Not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I provide the clerk, the date and time of the next meeting in the City Council. It is Tuesday, May twenty twenty.
Madam Chair!
Who's speaking, please?
Madam Chair, this is Alderman Vasquez.
This is Alderman Vasquez.
Madam Chair, I move to amend the ordinance before the council by striking out the date currently listed and replacing it with May sixth, twenty twenty.
Alderman Harris has prepared a lay-in. Alderman Vasquez has...
Point of clarification.
This is Alderman Vasquez?
Yes, this is Alderman Vasquez.
Please proceed, sir.
Sir, yeah, so I was moving to move the schedule up sooner so that as the council will be moving an operating during a crisis to be able to come up with...
Sir, I don't think that's a point of clarification.
It is now. So, per clarification, from the point of clarification, is the laying of the table a vote to not allow public debate on that matter?
Alderman Harris?
I moved it laid on the table.
So, does that, that is what it means? If somebody votes to lay it on the table, they're saying they don't want a public debate by not having a closer council meeting, correct?
Alderman Vasquez, the motion is laid on the table. The motion has the effect of not allowing the amendment at this time. The motion is laid on the table. All in favor of laying it on the table signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the votes in the name?
May.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Alderman, and I know some of you are new and don't know the rules, but one thing is, one thing is, some of you just don't know the rules. Once a motion has been made and we're voting, voting, but out of deference to the body, we will allow for another roll call vote.
Yeah, I would like, thank you. This is not a...
Madam Chair, Alderman Vasquez, you are out of order. We are doing a roll call vote. This is not a debate. I'm ongoing commentary. Alderman Mitchell, are... Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
I motion for personal privilege. I am being impugned as you're saying I'm new, and that is not why I'm asking for this.
Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Alderman Masada.
And just to clarify, the motion on the table is laid on the table to disallow the amendment offered by Alderman Vasquez. All those who want to lay it on the table, you'll vote yes. All those opposed to the laid-on-the-table motion by Chairman Harris will vote no. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Alderman Masada.
No.
Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
No.
Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Sawyer.
No.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, no.
Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Vargas.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sijo Lopez.
No.
Alderman Alderman Alderman.
No.
Alderman Bernett.
Aye.
Alderman Urban.
No.
Alderman Talfiaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
No.
Alderman Wagisack.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Diego.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sijo Lopez.
No.
Alderman Alderman Alderman. Alderman Diego.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Please wait until we finish the roll. Alderman Nix.
Aye.
Alderman Cuzado.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith. Alderman Honey.
Aye.
Alderman Garner.
Aye.
Alderman Vargas.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Henton.
No.
Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Gil.
No.
Alderman Vargas.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
No.
Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer.
No.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchels, aye? Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Gil.
No.
Alderman Vargas.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sijo Lopez.
No.
Alderman Alderman Alderman. Alderman Bernett.
Aye.
Alderman Urban.
No.
Alderman Talfiaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
No.
Alderman Wagner.
No.
Alderman Carter. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, no.
Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Vargas.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sijo Lopez.
No.
Alderman Alderman Alderman. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Urban.
No.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sijo Lopez.
No.
Alderman Alderman Alderman.
No.
Alderman Bernett.
Aye.
Alderman Urban.
No.
Alderman Talfiaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
No.
Alderman Wagisack.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Diego.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
No.
Alderman Diego.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Please wait until we finish the roll. Alderman Nix.
Aye.
Alderman Cuzado.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith. Alderman Honey.
Aye.
Alderman Garner.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Henton.
No.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Henton.
No.
Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Did you hear my vote? I'm going to go through the order again, Alderman. Alderman Curtis. Alderman David Moore. Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Smith, are you even out?
No.
Is there anyone else who needs to be recorded? Alderman Carter.
I said yes.
Your Honor, there are twenty-six days, twenty-one days.
The motion to sustain, to lay it on the table, is sustained. Alderman Mitchell?
I have an ordinance for setting the date and time of the next meeting.
I provided an order to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council for Wednesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty, at ten a.m.
Mr. Clark? Please read the ordinance.
It is amended by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section one, in accordance with Illinois Executive Order twenty twenty-seven, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be conducted by video conference on Wednesday, the twentieth day of May, twenty twenty, beginning at ten o'clock a.m., and shall provide for remote participation and remote viewing by members of the public. Section two, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell?
I'm sorry, I move passage in the omnibus.
Madam President, that require a vote from Alderman Lopez.
I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez, you...
For giving, Madam President, as a point of order, Alderman require a vote.
I apologize, Alderman Lopez, you have a lot of reverb, and so I'm having a difficult time hearing. You can try it one more time.
Yes, I'll try it again. As a point of order, that motion requires a vote, I believe.
What motion?
The mo- the ordinance, the, the motion to approve the ordinance and setting the date and time for the next meeting requires an actual vote.
I believe that Alderman, Alderman, Alderman Mitchell moved for passage of this in the omnibus, at which time there will be a vote.
I think generally we've done this quite...
Hearing no objections to putting this in the omnibus, so order.
I object.
Madam President?
There's been plenty of objections, Madam President, which is why I mentioned that.
No, you know, Alderman Lopez, you... The mo- the ordinance, the the motion to approve the ordinance setting the date and time for the next meeting requires an actual vote.
I believe that Alderman, Alder- uh Alderman Mitchell moved for passage of this in the omnibus, at which time there will be a vote.
I think generally we've done this right.
Have hearing no objection to putting this in the omnibus, so ordered.
I object.
Madam President.
There's been plenty of objections, Madam President, which is why I mentioned it.
Well, no, you know, Alderman Lopez, you.
As a point of order, being admonished earlier this week for profanity, I would ask that you do the same to over just call this quite a something show, so that in fairness, we are all being treated equally as how we're being addressed as Alderman. Because if you didn't hear it, the world just heard what one of our colleagues called this meeting right now. And it wasn't a crap show. And I would expect nothing less, having been berated for saying something highly less earlier in the week.
Are you finished, Alderman?
Waiting for you, Madam President.
We. I believe someone called for a roll call vote on the ordinance for setting the date and time of the next meeting. Who was that? Please identify yourself for the record.
Alderman Vasquez called for a roll call.
Mister clerk, please call a roll call vote on setting the date and time.
Madam President, Madam President, Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Sir, I would, I would appreciate, I would appreciate, let me finish before you interrupt, because it's very difficult on a, on a virtual city council meeting. Then you can, I will call on you, and you can talk to your heart's delight. Okay, let me finish. There's a, there is a request by Alderman Lopez for a roll call vote. Alderman Rosa, do you wish we heard on Alderman Lopez?
Yes. For a roll call. Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, we are in the midst of a crisis, so I'm going to be speaking on this measure to set the next date of our meeting. This measure to set the next date for our meeting will set the meeting for the end of May, for May twentieth. We just saw a very close vote to attempt to set the meeting to an earlier date at May sixth, and I was very disappointed to see that twenty-six of my colleagues voted to stop this measure from moving forward. There are so many families that are suffering in this moment, that need relief on housing, that need relief from paying sick leave, we need to meet sooner at the council, we need to do our job. So I certainly hope that we defeat this motion right now to set the meeting to May twentieth, twenty twenty, so that we can bring forward a new measure to meet earlier as a city council, and do the job of the people who are dying and suffering in this moment. Please vote no.
Madam President. I wish to speak, this is Alderman Vasquez.
Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Madam President, um. I I reluctantly agree with Alderman uh Lopez in regards to one of our colleagues using uh profanity on our council, I think that we've gotten out of hand of respect for one another, and for respect of the presidency. I'm, I'm asking all of our colleagues, let's keep this decent and in order, thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I've had my hand up for a while.
Yes, I'm, I'm coming to uh Alderman Sazado, the chair recognizes Alderman Sazado.
Thank you, Madam President, I concur with my colleague, uh, Alderman Austin, this is just out of control, this has to stop, okay? We're all trying to do our best, we're well aware of the fact that we're in tough times right now, but please, please stop the nonsense, that's all I ask, thank you very much, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President, um, I do apologize if anything is viewed as nonsense or as an insult that is not my intent at all. Um, all I intended to do was to move our meeting up sooner, because the people of Chicago want to find solutions, and in the municipal code of states, we're supposed to have meetings every two weeks. So to be able to do that when it's not a crisis, to have to be able to do some, a meeting earlier during the crisis, is not outlandish, it is doing exactly the same thing the executive branch is doing, asking to be nimble and fast in the moment of crisis, to find solutions for our city. That is the only reason I'm asking, so I'm asking for a roll call, because I'd like to know which members of this council don't think we should move meetings up sooner, so we can solve problems for our city.
Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Uh, sorry, uh, Madam President, I, I didn't mean to have my hand up.
Is, is this a punk you show? Is this a punk you show? Mad.
So, there's a, there's a motion for a roll call, Mister Clark, uh, please call a roll call vote on Alderman Mitchell's uh motion for, and our ordinance.
I do.
Set the next time of the city council meeting as May twentieth at ten a.m. A yes vote is setting the time for May twentieth, ten a.m., a no vote is opposing that. Mister Clark?
Alderman Lasada.
No.
Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins.
Yes.
Alderman Dowell.
Yes.
Alderman King. Alderman King. Alderman Harrison.
Yes.
Alderman Sawyer.
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Zabloski Garza. Alderman Zabloski Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Thompson.
Yes.
Alderman Cardenas.
Yes.
Alderman Quinn.
Yes.
Alderman Burke, um, I'm sorry, Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Coleman.
Yes.
Alderman Moore.
Yes.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Seicho Lopez.
No.
Alderman Moltenado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Yes, yes.
Alderman Urban. Alderman Urban. Alderman Talfiaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Yes.
Alderman Cardona.
Yes.
Alderman Wagis Pack.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Diego's.
Aye.
Alderman Miss.
Aye.
Alderman Sazado.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Politano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Hmm, yes.
Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Tony.
Yes.
Alderman Garner.
Aye.
Alderman Campbellman.
Yes.
Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
No.
Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman King.
No.
Alderman Urban.
No.
Alderman Curtis. Your Honor, there are thirty-six days and thirteen days.
The motion uh passes, the next city council meeting will be May twentieth uh at ten a.m. All of our, Alderman Mitchell, motion to adjourn it.
Madam President. Reconsider.
Roll call on the uh, on the, the remaining items on the omnibus. Will the Alderman, please make sure their microphones are unmuted, uh, Mister Clark, will you please call a roll call on the uh omnibus?
Alderman Lasada.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins.
Yes.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Harrison.
Yes.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Zabloski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Lopez was aye, thank you.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Seicho Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Moltenado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Talfiaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagis Pack.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Diego's.
Aye.
Alderman Miss.
Aye.
Alderman Sazado.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vazquez.
Yes.
Alderman Politano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Garner.
Aye.
Alderman Campbellman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis. Your Honor, there are forty-nine days, no days.
The matters on the uh omnibus are therefore um passed. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration of the uh omnibus.
Madam President, can we please, uh, motion to reconsider this last vote?
All in favor of the motion for reconsideration.
Last vote.
Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, say nay?
No. No, asshole. No. Oh, no, no. Heck no.
Motion for reconsideration. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
Madam President.
Madam, Madam President, two people have their hand up.
Um, Alderman Lopez, the chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, I know we are all eager to end this meeting, um, but I do have a, a point of order, uh, with regards to the previous point that I raised about the admonishment of the language, as well as the second comment that came in during this vote, which is whether or not we were all being punked, or this was a punk show. I'd like to know if we will be admonishing those members as well, for their comments that impugn this body now.
Well, Alderman Lopez, unlike your comment from the other day, I did not hear those, but I'll go back to what Chairman Austin said and Alderman Sazado. Our town and our city is watching, there are children that are watching, I would expect the members of this body to conduct themselves in an appropriate professional manner. While we may not all agree on every issue, and that's the po- the heart of democracy, is robust debate, we can do so without impugning the integrity of individuals, without impugning the integrity of the process, and then without impugning the integrity of the, the body. But, the residents of this city, and importantly, the voters of your ward are watching, and I would just ask, members of the city.
Of your city, thank you.
To conduct themselves, sorry, sir, if you, Alderman Lopez, please, I asked you not to interrupt, you want courtesy, you need to give courtesy.
I asked for, I asked for a point of privilege, because my reputation and character has been impugned, and you said you did not.
If we moved on that, and we're moving to the no. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
Once again, everyone, for the business, for the society, I move that we adjourn.
Aye.
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 Commute your phone, all of us, for the motion to adjourn, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried, council is adjourned, thank you.